Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is the June 4th special meeting of the Stonington Planning and Zoning Commission. I'm Chuck Sheen, the chairman. Thank you all for joining us. Thanks to our commissioners for attending this evening. I guess various members will be taking the place of Andy this evening. And Clifton, I'll defer to you. I was not here at the last meeting, so I'm going to need your assistance to determine who will act at different points in the meeting. But we have one member who's missing. We have to have a full quorum here, so various members will come in and out of this meeting as progresses. Next item on the agenda is minutes of May 21st.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes as written and submitted for meeting number 1758 from May 21st, 2024.
Thank you, Ryan. Motion to approve. Is there a second?
No, I have a comment on the minutes.
Oh, sure.
So, I think it's on page two.
I think we need a second. Did you make a -- did somebody make a second there? We need a -- in order to discuss the motion, we need a second.
I second.
Okay, so there's a motion, a second to the motion, and any discussion?
Yeah.
Yes, Lynn.
I'm sorry about that. So I think it's on page two where it says Ms. Conway made a motion to approve the application with the remaining existing stipulations. Do you see that?
Yeah.
Don't we usually list what those remaining existing stipulations were? Like, how are we going to know what they are? Do you want to list what they are in the minutes?
Well, you signed the record of decision already, so we do have them. We can add them.
Yeah, I think they were part of the original. At the bottom, the staff report, they were the five.
They were the five?
Yeah, they were listed there.
All right. Thank you.
All set with that, Lynn?
Yes.
Okay. So there's a motion and a second. Any additional discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstain? Motion passes. Minutes of May 2nd?
Our May 22nd. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes as written and submitted for meeting number 1759 from May 22nd, 2024.
Motion to approve minutes number 1759. Thank you, Ryan. Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you, Bennett. Any discussion on the motion?
I'll abstain from the vote as I was not present on that meeting.
Okay. As will I. Anyone else with discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstention.
Abstain. Next item is public comment. It's an opportunity for citizens in the audience to make a public comment. Anyone can come forward, just identify yourself and your address, and make a statement to the commission. Anyone wish to make a statement? Hearing none. Correspondents? Clifton?
None.
No correspondents? Staff reports?
None.
No staff reports. Anyone on the commission have anything to report for the good of the order?
No.
Hearing none. Zoning enforcement violations, any reports under this item?
None.
Clifton, did we get any complaints on the Seaport Marina parking situation over Memorial Day weekend?
We've received, I believe, at this date, four complaints, all stemming from the same thing. Those are being addressed by the zoning enforcement officer through the standard process.
Okay. And will we hear what the outcome is?
Yep, yes, you will. When we do this staff report for the zoning enforcement violations, those are submitted by the zoning enforcement officer at the regular meeting of each month, and it's for all of the complaint enforcement activity from the prior month. So since this complaint came in in June, it would be -- you would see the response to that in the July report.
Okay. I think there have been people who have been pretty vocal about that, so I do think it's something that we should at least highlight once all the information is in.
Yep.
Yep, thanks.
Agreed. Any additional questions? Hearing none. I'll move on to administrative review. Amendment to existing letter of credit for Rosen and Sediment Bond, number 2304, in relation to approved application by Lattisori Development. Clifton, any report on this?
Yes, one brief report. Basically, what's been described as a -- or what's before you is a release of the line of credit number 68184715 in the amount of $12,630.75, and an amendment to LOC 68184716 by that same number totaling 84205. The original bond amounts for the project 2204 SPA. Those were two separate lines of credit. One is being completely released by the Finance Department, and the other is absorbing the total, so there's no change in the overall bonded line of credit. Procedurally, this could go through a bond release process, which we send out the application to all of the interested parties in town, wait months at a time, and then come back and present it to the commission. Honestly, this is just a clerical issue for the Department of Finance, and I don't see it needing the necessity of going through that arduous process for the commission. So this is just a rubber stamp on a very clerical process.
So are you recommending approval on this?
Yep.
Any conditions?
None.
Okay. I should have any questions of Clifton on this? What's the commission's pleasure on the bond amendment for letter of credit number 68184715?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the application as submitted for the letter of credit bond reduction for number 68184716.
Motion to approve by Ryan. Thank you, Ryan. Is there a second?
I second.
By Bennett. Thank you, Bennett. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Chair votes aye. Next item on the agenda is poll business. My understanding is the public hearing was closed at the last meeting on this, and for the record, I've watched the tape of the meeting. I was not present at that meeting. Clifton, I think there's an item that came out of the last meeting, a request for a legal opinion on floor area ratio.
First, you would need to see either Ben or Bennett, because they were both present at the last meeting in your stead, so in place of Andy.
Bennett was seated initially for the first time when Andy was --
You just need to formally see him.
Right.
I'm sorry.
Bennett was seated the first time when Andy was absent, so I would assume he would continue on in that position.
Correct. Correct.
Thank you, sorry. I'm also doing double duty as minutes, so.
Patience. So at the last meeting, when the public hearing was closed after or during the commission's discussion, they requested that town staff receive an opinion from the town attorney regarding the concerns on FAR raised. Both the applicant and members of the public that were speaking that evening brought up the fact that the FAR was above the total number granted in the variance in 2001 for the construction of the chapel. I received a letter from the town attorney earlier today, dated yesterday, and it's basically just providing an outline of their opinion on the matter. I have a couple copies with me, so for any interested parties, I'll be able to distribute that. But to surmise what the town attorney is saying is that, the long story short, if the zoning board of appeals granted a variance for FAR to construct the chapel, the only currency that matters to the town would be the construction of the chapel itself, not the FAR total. So if there was a clerical error or mathematical error in that calculation of that number, that would be irrelevant because the sole purpose of granting the variance would be for the construction of the chapel. So looking at the project before us tonight, the only issue that would be raised is as long as that there's not an expansion of the total gross floor area or FAR beyond what's existing, which the applicant has proposed not doing. So it's a little bit broader strokes in the two-page memo that was provided, but in terms of the commission making a decision, this doesn't need to go before ZBA, before the commission can make a decision on this application. So that's what's going to --
Okay, so no variance required?
No variance required.
Clifton, can I ask, so there is still another part that's before the zoning board of appeals, correct? Or I thought there was another thing that the hearing got moved to July now.
There's an existing appeal on Ender's Island for the parking area, which is largely a separate process from this application. And that public hearing has been bumped a few times, and now it's scheduled for the July 9th ZBA meeting. And speaking both with the zoning enforcement officer and the town attorney, the commission doesn't need to wait out that process to make a decision on this application either, because those are separate.
Okay.
So a no vote on the variance would have no impact on this?
Nope, it would not. The only thing that I recommended in my report, and I'll still recommend, is just due to receiving this letter now. I think the commission needs time to read it, think about it, and then come back at the next meeting and deliberate more before making the decision. So I've recommended no decision made on the application tonight. That's all I have so far.
Anyone have any questions? Clifton?
So you're -- sorry, Clifton, you're recommending that we do not make a decision tonight. What would be the date of the -- I just want to make sure we're all here, because now we're getting into July.
It should be June 18th.
Okay.
And the date without receiving an extension from the applicant, the decision has to be made by June 27th, so this would be within that timeframe.
Okay.
I believe beyond this, the procedural questions that the commission had requested have been answered by the town attorney. Now it's just talking about the substance of the application. So at least procedurally, the commission's good to continue deliberation.
And basically, just to summarize, is what the town attorney is saying is the question or the discussion of FAR, as long as the FAR is not increased with the construction proposed in the application, it's a nonstarter. It's not part of our discussion.
It is short enough, and with the commission's pleasure, I can read it into the record. Additionally, I do have it on file, and it is before you, but I can read it if you would like.
I think that's a very good idea, so that people in the audience can read it as well.
Understood.
Thank you.
All right, so, Dear Clifton, this letter is a follow-up to your and the planning and zoning commission's requests relating to the floor area issues raised by the applicant and neighbors for the pending site plan approval application for the reasons set forth below. It is our opinion that so long as the square footage of all buildings being constructed and demolished nets at or less than the current square footage, the applicant does not need to seek any variance regarding FAR totals prior to the planning and zoning voting on their proposed site plan. In reviewing the various application approvals for the subject property, including the 2001 variance for the construction of the new chapel and the town staff's 2018 report, the Jason Vincent report, the correct currency to review the applicant's site plan is in square footage of existing buildings, not trying to extrapolate the percentage of land and buildings in a mathematical equation. The basis for this is that, as may have occurred in 2001, errors in the math can occur. Additionally, as surveying techniques may vary and/or improve, square footage of the land may change in certain ways, thereby impacting the quote-unquote "math." Upon best belief in -- or best information and belief, there have been no changes to the number or size of structures at the subject property since the construction of the chapel. Additionally, the site was analyzed in its entirety in the 2018 Vincent report, whereby it was determined that all existing uses and structures at that time were legally pre-existing non-conforming. As such, the proper FAR analysis for the P&amp;Z to apply to the current application is whether there is a net gain or loss to the square footage of the proposed and existing buildings, not to try and formulate a mathematical equation for FAR percentage with survey results of land and buildings because of the possible variances in those figures stated above. It is simply a case of reviewing how much square footage is being removed and how much is being added in the current application. In sum, provided the square footage of all buildings after the proposed construction will be the same or less than the current square footage totals that exist, the P&amp;Z may proceed considering the application. There is no requirement that the applicant receive any sort of variance from the ZBA beforehand. So, and that's the end of the letter. And so, just as I stated, the only math that matters is the existing structures on the site post the construction of the chapel, and as long as that square footage is net equal or lower, then the commission can proceed in reviewing this application without going to the ZBA.
So it really has nothing to do with the area of the island at all?
It does not, no.
Okay. Just as a point of order, on the area of any piece of land that fronts on a river or an ocean or the sound, it's subject to what's called evulsion. That's a sudden action, wave action, that can take land away from your property. Or accretion, that's the gradual addition of deposits on the land that could add to your land. And in the prior case, you lose the land, and in the latter case, you gain the land. So it's highly unlikely that the two surveyors on any given day are going to agree exactly on what the area of this island is because of evulsion, the sudden action of removing of land, which diminishes what you want, and accretion that occurs over time where you gain land. And I think some of the slight discrepancies between the surveyors is as a result of evulsion and accretion. I think your suggestion is a good one, and gives everyone an opportunity to look at all the material that was submitted on this, together with the attorney's opinion, and we make a decision the next time. Do we need a motion to continue this to the next meeting?
Mr. Chairman, do we want to just make sure everyone's going to be here?
Yeah, that's probably a good idea. Thank you. Anyone plan to be absent?
I plan to be here.
Okay.
I'll be here.
Okay. And I do as well. With that in mind, what's the commission's pleasure on the application of Ender's Island?
I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to continue the discussion for that application until the next scheduled meeting, which is June 18th.
And that does fall within the deadline to make a decision?
Correct.
Okay. Everyone present for that application understand that, I know it's just a regular meeting, but it's continued to the next meeting pending a vote here. Thank you, Ryan, for the motion to approve continuation. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Lynn. Thank you, Lynn. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any abstentions or objections? Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing. Lynn, would you read the notice, please?
A public hearing will be held on Tuesday, June 4th, 2024, at 7:00 PM at the Stonington Board of Education District Office located at 40 Fields, Shippensburg, Connecticut. The following application is scheduled to be heard. PZ 2411 SUP plus CAM, J&amp;H Mystic Hospitality LLC, special use permit application and coastal area management review for renovation of an existing two-story hotel in a three-story -- into a three-story 94-room hotel with parking lot, shared outdoor plaza, landscaping, and associated site improvements. Property is located at 253 Greenville Ave, Mystic. MBL 171-1-2 property is located in the TC-80 zone.
Thank you, Lynn. Clifton, who would be next to be seated?
Could be Mary Ellen's turn.
Okay. All right. Procedures for a public hearing are the applicant will identify themselves, make a presentation. Commission will have an opportunity to ask questions. Some of those questions might occur during the presentation. When that is concluded, we'll ask staff for any input. Follow on to that, anyone in the audience who wishes to speak, either way, should sign up to the left over here on our sign-up sheet. You'll be permitted to speak. And those who have spoken will have an opportunity for rebuttal. Those who have spoken in favor, those who have spoken in objection will have an opportunity to rebut until everybody's said their piece. With that in mind, counselor?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. For the record, my name is John Casey. I'm a partner with the law firm Robinson &amp; Cole, and we represent the applicant, J&amp;H Mystic Hospitality. We're here tonight on a special use permit application and coastal area management review for a renovation. I wrote the word transformative. I think it kind of will be. Renovation of the existing two-story Howard Johnson Motel at the off-ramp for I-95 on Route 27 into a three-story Home to Suites Hotel. And it will include, and you'll hear from our engineer, upgrades to fire and ADA accessibility, improvements to the overall site circulation and parking. It will be separating the hotel from the diner. All that will be discussed by our project engineer. But the thing to keep in mind, while this site will be transformed, the change of the use is not all that significant. The restaurant will remain unchanged. We're not adding seats. We're not taking seats away. The hotel use remains the same. What we are doing, and while it's going from two stories to three stories, we are only adding 17 rooms. We're going to reconfigure the floor plate, so we're going to go from 77 rooms to 94 rooms. It's not like we're adding a whole third more or 50% more rooms by adding another floor. So I just want to make sure we set the scene, set the stage appropriately as you think about this. There's a lot to consider on the site, but in terms of the use, we're not really expanding the use all that much. And you'll hear from our engineer about the traffic implications and the parking implications of adding those 17 rooms. So actually, the development team with me here tonight is Pete Parent. He's a project -- he's a PE, project manager for CHA Solutions. He'll go over the site plan shortly. The owner again is J&amp;H Mystic Hospitality. Babu Moore, who's a representative, couldn't be here tonight, but he's very excited about this project. Housekeeping matter, we had previously provided the mail receipts for notices. Those are in the record, so we've properly noticed the budding property owners. You won't be surprised we're here, because I was just recently here getting a text amendment to modify the setback requirements or clarify setback requirements along I-95 and to modify the buffer requirements in the TC-80 zone. And we are proceeding under those amendments. Thank you. So if you've read Clifton's report, you'll note that he -- there's a few open-ended issues here. So this is what I propose for tonight and for the consideration of this application. We're going to go over -- Pete will go over the plan. We'd like to, if you have any questions, we'd like to answer those. If members of the public have questions or comments, we'd like to hear those. But since we have to come back and provide additional information on the issues that Clifton raised, which includes a clarification on parking, loading berths and signs, we would request that the hearing be continued so that we can provide that information into the record, and then you'll have a full record to make a decision at a future meeting. And I don't know what your schedule is like. Are you meeting on the 2nd of July? No. Yeah. So if we need to do, because we won't get it in in time, obviously, for the June 18th meeting, we're willing to provide an extension request, if necessary, into July. So with that, if you have any questions for me, I'd like to turn it over to Pete Parent, and he can go through the site development plan. Thank you.
Thank you. As John mentioned, my name is Pete Parent. I'm a professional engineer at CHA, and I'll just kind of run through the design plans. If at any point there's a question on a sheet, just stop me, and we can kind of run through it. So this is the existing site, the off-ramp from I-95 onto Route 27, kind of borders the northern portion of the site. The existing Mystic Diner Restaurant is in the front, and the Howard Johnson extends to the west. There's another hotel property adjacent, as well as a restaurant, and Coogan Boulevard pulls off to the east here. So existing conditions, you know, it's very much an old-style development, you know, the building in the middle wrapped by parking. There is an existing stormwater basin here that's partially on the applicant's property and partially within the Connecticut DOT right-of-way. There's some existing buffer screening along a drainage swale that runs to the west and discharges to a head wall here that then discharges out to the river. There is a dumpster area for the restaurant here and a dumpster area for the hotel here. And then, you know, very minimal space between the two hotel properties in between the parking. They both have parking and drive aisles that kind of abut to a very narrow landscape strip. So proposed demolition, the applicant is proposing to remove what is currently the lobby area of the existing hotel to separate the diner from the new hotel building. And then, obviously, we'd be reconfiguring a lot of the onset utilities, preserving some of these major trees where we can, and removing a couple others here that just kind of fell out of areas that we could work within. So the new site layout looks very similar, but we've increased the parking along the northern edge and added an emergency access drive aisle, you know, one-way traffic to improve fire safety and also circulation around the building. And we've kind of upgraded the parking. You know, the existing site has a lot of parking spaces that are either not quite compliant with dimensional requirements, or the drive aisles alongside them are not compliant. So we're coming in and making, you know, consistent nine-by-18 parking spaces with 24-foot wide drive aisles all the way around and kind of, you know, cleaning a lot of that up. We created a more consistent landscape area here between the two properties and, you know, tried to add islands where we could to increase green space, maintaining the two dumpster locations, and adding, you know, a new drop-off area for the new hotel lobby, which we located in this area. So from a drainage perspective, you know, the existing site has a couple of existing catch basins alongside the diner that discharge into the existing water quality basin. We'd be maintaining the, essentially, that similar area draining to that basin, but what we're doing is providing deep sump catch basins without the hoods and then a hydrodynamic separator to treat for water quality prior to discharging into that water quality basin. And then we're proposing to add an outlet control structure to more effectively utilize the volume that's available. the volume that's available in that water quality basin before it discharges out to the state system. On the backside of the building, similarly, under existing conditions, everything kind of drains to one catch basin out here in the back that then discharges directly to the head wall that discharges out to the river. For that system, we adding several new catch basins, also deep sumps, outlet hoods, and hydrodynamic separators. And then we're also providing a large underground detention system to compensate for peak flow increases due to the increase in impervious area from the additional parking and driving that we're adding. So overall, you know, we're still matching or reducing peak flows in, you know, conformance with the updated Connecticut Stormwater Regulations, which requires us to reduce our two-year storm down to fifty percent of existing conditions. And we're adding a significant amount of water quality treatment where, under existing conditions, there is none. From the utility perspective, the intent is to keep the water and sewer services to the restaurant intact, but to replace the water and sewer to the hotel with new services. We've discussed the sewer connection issue with the sewer department. The applicant is aware that there's a moratorium on connections and just wants to get his name on the list with his approval so that when improvements are made and capacity becomes available, that his, his project is in the line to use that conditional capacity. And similarly, you know, as John was mentioning, from a water supply perspective, you know, seventeen rooms doesn't affect our, our peak demand for water supply. So from an aquarium water perspective, we're okay on that side of things as well. So this is a lighting plan. Obviously, the new parking is going to come with new lighting. All, you know, full cutoff LED fixtures, dark sky compliant, and we're, you know, at zero or a tenth of a foot candle at the perimeter of the site. Then this is probably more for the ADIB, but this is the proposed landscape plan. As I mentioned, you know, we added some green space where we could and have added a number of trees in between the two parcels and then kind of taking into account some of the recommendations and guidelines from ADIB for this area of town, trying to, you know, create more of a corner here and really improving the aesthetics of this that fronts on Route twenty-seven. And then adding some additional buffer between the property and I ninety-five along the north. And then one of the, the features of the site, you know, it's kind of part of a brand standard and also just, you know, an opportunity that presents itself by removing that, that existing lobby is kind of creating this, this little bit of a landscape courtyard in between the two buildings that will serve, you know, for some, some community space that would be available to both patrons of the hotel and, and the restaurant. And the rest is details. Just want to get to, so sediment erosion controls. The site basically pitches in every direction, so we'd be ringing the development with a, an erosion control barrier. We're calling out for either silt fence or waddles on the contractors' decision. And then all the catch basins would be treated with sediment sacks during construction. And then we have a stockpile area out here in the existing parking area, also ringed with silt fence as needed. And then we'd be proposing our construction entrance in this location, allowing, you know, continued access to the restaurant and providing access to the main area of construction, which would be the hotel. So if there are any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them.
Any questions from the commission?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Several. My understanding is you're taking a curb cut on twenty-seven and blocking that off and going to utilize the other curb cut or the one curb cut that you share with the restaurant slash hotel to the south?
Yeah, correct. So there's an existing curb cut that's, that's shared by the two properties with the signalized intersection. We'd be maintaining that entrance and closing that little slip ramp entrance into the site off of Route twenty-seven.
Right. And then I didn't see, and the drawing's a little small from my tired eyes, where the roof drains, they all go to the same, I assume?
So yeah, the roof drains would all be connected into the catch basin system and then discharge into the detention system and treatment system.
Okay. Thank you. And then lastly, I think, oh, two more. The turning, you have a turning drawing, which I'm assuming is a fire truck?
Yes.
Again, I could, it's so faint, I couldn't see it. And I think it gets stuck in the back of the building? Does it, is it able to go all the way around the building?
It is able to go all the way around the building. I can pull that up.
Could you highlight that in more detail for me? Right there, it looked like it, oh, it does make the turn?
It does make the turn.
If no one's parking there?
Well, so...
Oh, I see. There we go.
Yeah, so that's the turn.
That's a tight one, isn't it?
It, it's a tight turn, but we're kind of, we're in a pinch point here.
Could it come in from the other direction if necessary, I assume?
Certainly, you know, if, if they wanted to, they could come and, you know, take a left-hand turn around the site and make it to the back of the building.
Okay. Thank you. And for clarification, the last page of the package, I finally found out what was the south elevation and what was the north elevation. It wasn't marked on the other previous elevations. And will those signs be lit that are on the building?
I believe there is an intent to light some of the signs as allowable, but I don't believe we've made that determination. It's one of the points that Clifton has raised. We don't have a full sign package yet.
Oh, for the signage, that's what we're referring to. Okay. And have you considered using solar at all on the rooftop? It's a nice flat roof that could benefit by...
We have had discussions, but there haven't been any, you know, serious considerations as of yet.
Thank you. That's all, Mr. Chair.
Anyone else with questions? I haven't, Bill. Could you flip back to the slide on drainage? So it looks like the drainage from the, let's call it the restaurant area, the east side of the site?
Yep.
Northeast side of the site goes to a water quality basin. Does that water quality basin span the state's property line?
It does. It's on both this property and the state's property.
Is there a permit, an encroachment permit for that now?
There is not an existing encroachment permit for that that I'm aware of.
Okay, so have you secured, those permits, as you know, are not easy to come by.
Yes. Yeah, so we're assuming, you know, we've submitted the plans to District Two for review just from an, you know, you know, encroachment perspective, and we're assuming that, given that the site discharges into their system on both ends, that we're going to have to come along and prepare, you know, a formal drainage agreement to secure those permits with them.
Okay. It might, might help the commission if, since it's, you know, proposed on the plans, if we could get some indication from conduct as to their inclination on, on that permit. And I know the people in the district are usually pretty accommodating when they realize that a pending action is dependent on this. So it doesn't have to be a permit, which they probably won't grant until after this commission either approves or denies it, but it would be helpful if we could have some feedback from conduct and their inclination to grant an encroachment permit for that discharge.
Yep.
And on that discharge, is there any detention proposed? Are those galleys in between the catch basins or?
So there are not any galleys on this side. We're using that, that water quality basin for the detention. The front half of the site, we're not increasing impervious area significantly. So that's kind of the reason why we were just proposing to provide an outlet control structure here to, to better utilize the volume that exists.
So you've done the flood routing calculations and everything?
Yes.
There's sufficient storage there. For what, what types of storms have you analyzed?
So we typically do our analyzes for the two, the ten, the twenty-five, and the hundred.
Okay. And is that similar for the detention area to the rear?
Yes.
Is there any emergency overflow from that at all?
So there is not a, you know, a defined emergency overflow. You know, essentially the, the parking lot is curbed and lower, so the parking lot itself would kind of flood in this corner if the system wasn't functioning, and then would eventually overrun the curb and drain into that soil.
And is that designed not to flood in a hundred-year storm as well?
It is designed not to flood, correct.
Okay. Appropriate soil tests and everything have already been done in that area?
We're not accounting for any infiltration in our, our designs.
Okay. All right. I think, I think that handles my questions. Anyone else have any questions?
Add one more, if I may, Mr. Chair. Are you the person to talk to about your parking, I mean, your traffic study? Excuse me?
Yeah, we can discuss the, the parking.
The traffic study of it.
So we, we have not provided a traffic study. We've provided a shared parking analysis.
Okay, shared parking.
Kind of, kind of the same thing.
Yeah, in, in a way. But it's very thorough, however, it doesn't say, it just says weekdays, Saturdays, Fridays, Saturdays, but no dates. So this is all hypothetical?
Well, so it's based on generation data from ITE. They, they go out and they do surveys of sites and determine peak parking demand across the country. And then they collect that data and they develop what they consider to be average data, you know, average usage, and then eighty-fifth percentile usage for restaurant style uses, for hotel style uses.
But, 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 but. But Friday, February is a little different than July.
Yes, absolutely. And that, that keeps, what they're looking at is peak usage. They're not assuming, okay, we went out there in February and these are the peak us, they're, they're doing more of an analysis to determine what that, that peak rate is.
This is like a blanket analytical study, not this site itself?
Correct. It's, it's a, you know, an analysis of hotels as a whole, you know, and they break it down between, you know, all suites hotels, resort hotels, that kind of thing, to kind of get into a better, you know, view of the actual usages.
And in your practice, has this matched up with reality?
Yeah, I mean, so obviously there's some variability, right? I mean, you, you get Chick-fil-A, the first week they're open, the parking lot, you can't have enough parking spaces, right? But it's overall, you know, there is definitely some value to it, and I, we've found that it is a good tool. It's a realistic number. You know, obviously zoning regulations, as part of a necessity, need to be a little bit conservative, right? Because you're dealing with a whole broad host of uses, a whole broad host of, you know, other variables, small sites, individual uses. So the, those numbers are tend to be a little bit more conservative than what you need to, you know, functionally supply a site with enough parking.
And how up to date are these numbers?
So that's, that's the most recent edition of the ITE parking generator.
Which was when?
So I believe it's two years old.
Two years old?
Yeah.
In your practice, Mr. Chair, how accurate is that?
ITE is, is a respected standard, you know, for both traffic generation and, and parking.
It's just Mystic has exploded in the past two to four years.
No, no, I, I...
I mistrust any number.
As a resident, I, you know, am painfully aware of that.
Well, I'm dubious of any.
It's hard to get out of my driveway on Coast Road on a Saturday morning. It's not last till like Sunday night.
If I could actually add on to what Ben was asking, if I may?
Yeah.
So I know on the other side, there's another property that's pointing, I know they're talking about renovating that, maybe adding, I don't know. But have you had sort of discussions with them about the shared parking, so they're aware or, you know, trying to make sure we don't get into like congestion overlap?
Right. Yeah, so we haven't had any discussions with them about sharing parking between the two sites. We, they, we do have the site plan that they submitted to you folks with their proposed kind of reconfiguration entrance, and we've accounted for that in our, our layout. But we haven't, given the, the similar uses, it's unlikely that there would be an opportunity for them to, to share parking. If, you know, hotels are busy, both, both lots would probably be busy.
Right. Okay.
Anyone else have questions?
Yeah, oh, go ahead.
The, the current parking for the current diner there, how is that working out? Like, when I drive by there, it always seems packed. I mean...
Yeah, so from my understanding, the diner does a very good business, and, you know, this parking lot is generally full, you know, when, during their busy times. And like I said, there are more parking spaces currently on-site than there will be in the future based on the proposed plan, but a number of those spaces do not conform to your dimensional requirements or the requirements for a, a safe drive aisle around it.
And it's assumed the diner is going to continue on there, correct?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
So I have a couple of questions. So for the parking, I have a theory that people use that lot that perhaps aren't going to the hotel or the diner, and they use it as a parking lot to get into Mystic or, or for other things. So have you taken that into account at all?
We, we have not. You know, the, the owners and the applicant have not raised a concern related to that, but it's certainly something we can look into.
Okay. And then this is not a traffic, you don't have any traffic numbers. Is that what I'm understanding?
We have not prepared a, a traffic study, given that we already have a signalized intersection with dedicated turn lanes at the, the entry point.
Okay.
And we're, we're adding a very small number of rooms, which is going to account for, you know, a minimal number of trips that's not going to impact any signal timing or anything like that.
Okay. What's the total height of the building? I, for the life of me, I couldn't find it. It's too, the numbers are too small. I'm so sorry.
Yeah, so the, the, the main roof parapet is thirty-five feet, eight inches, but then there is that, that kind of accent area that extends above that, and that extends another seven feet by the looks of things. So total height would be just over forty-five feet.
And the height for the district is fifty? Am I correct, Clifton?
You can go above that with the special use permit, and then each ascending height, you have to have a further setback.
Okay, but you don't, we don't need any special use permit for the forty-five feet?
It's already, it's already setback.
Thirty-five plus seven, forty-two feet.
Forty-five feet.
So we've already accounted for the additional story by adding the ten-foot setback.
Yep. Yeah, so the setback is already accounted for in the current design.
But that's a special use permit?
This is a special use permit application.
Okay, but, okay, my understanding, when we did the height variation, we extended the height in that zone, was that it was a separate special use?
That's if you go over the fifty feet.
Okay.
For the zone. So you could go up to, I believe, I believe it's sixty feet, but that's, that in itself is a special use permit.
Mm-hmm.
You could, if, you could theoretically roll all special use per, uses into one permit, so.
Okay.
But that's not in play here.
Okay. And you're not going to have any lighting on the roof, is that correct?
To my knowledge, there's no intent to have lighting on the roof, no.
Mm-hmm. Okay. And you don't have your signage package?
We do not have a complete signage package at this time, correct?
And you don't have examples of the light fixtures that you'll be using in the parking lot? You just know that they're not...
The light fixture for the parking lot is included on the, the site lighting plan.
No. That's what's in your parking lot?
That, that's the, the proposed light for the, the parking lot, the area lights, you pole-mounted. These are full cutoff LED fixtures.
Got it. Thank you.
Further questions?
You know, just looking at the parking study, what's the, so what's the current parking number versus the, um...
There's currently a hundred and sixty-two spaces striped on the parking lot, and there would be a hundred and fifty-two proposed.
Okay. And just looking through the traffic study, it kind of starts at one eighty-five and then tries to get down closer to what we have.
So one eighty-five would be what would be required on a, you know, a black and white read of the zoning regulations.
Okay. Sometimes with the diner, just driving by, you'll see, you know, tour buses or, you know, trailers or things, and obviously there's a sign that says they're not allowed, but they take up ten spots, and then where does, you know, everyone else go? Is that going to be more enforced with the less parking spots for the more rooms or?
Well, I think, you know, the, the enforcement of that kind of comes along with the, the proprietors. You know, obviously if a tour bus is taking up ten of their parking spaces and that's impacting their business, you know, they'll want to kind of quell that. But if it's not impacting their business, well, then they probably want the tour bus, right?
And would there be a plan for overflow parking? Obviously, you're kind of, you know...
Yeah, so that, that's one of the, the points that Clifton has raised, and it's one of the things we're discussing with the owner about, you know, potential solutions for that. that.
Yeah, for the record, John Casey. Actually, I just spoke to Babu about that, because he, they have, they own, control other properties in the area, and if necessary, they could do like a valet parking and park the cars off-site if they needed to. So we hope we don't have to get there. I think in general, parking has been adequate for the uses here now. It's full, it's what, you know, we want it to be. You don't want, you know, we might complain about people coming to Mystic. We still want people to come to Mystic. And the, the diner operators are here. If, I don't want to put you on the spot, but they might, you know, maybe if they have any information they want to add about, about the parking and the use. But there is an option for overflow parking if it becomes problematic.
Also, Ben? Okay, so I have just a follow-up question on the parking analysis. You've gone to the eighty-fifth percentile, and just explain the rationale as to the eighty-fifth percentile.
Sure. So like I said, they, they've collected data from a number of different sites and done a statistical analysis to determine an average and eighty-fifth percentile. So the eighty-fifth percentile means that out of an anticipated use, we would expect to be, have more parking than eighty-four out of a hundred and less parking than fourteen out of a hundred. So that kind of is generally accepted as, you know, the, the design number that you would use, because the, the hundred percent, you know, peak parking maximum is kind of an outlier. And the average is really, is, you know, kind of taking both ends of the spectrum, and it doesn't really give you a, a good design value. So that eighty-fifth percentile is, is a target we use in a lot of different design factors. You know, if we're talking about speed along the roadway, that the decision is always based on the eighty-fifth percentile speed. You know, you don't design a roadway based on, you know, the, the one person that's doing a hundred in a fifty mile an hour zone, right? Like, that's, that's kind of the rationale of using the eighty-fifth percentile.
So does, does this site, the revisions on this site, will they trigger an OSTA permit?
No, so we are, we are under two hundred parking spaces total, and we're under a hundred thousand square feet.
So there's no plan to do a traffic study of any kind?
I know, like I said, we are currently not proposing to do a, a full traffic study, given the fact that, you know, there's already a signalized intersection, it already has dedicated turn lanes. So there's really not, there's nowhere for us to really go from a traffic perspective for the intersection.
This is, this is probably one of the busiest intersections in town, and you are going to increase traffic there, so.
Yeah, but we're, we're going to increase.
You can understand.
Yeah, absolutely.
We traditionally drive by there, we see that the, the parking is almost always full at the diner. And this intersection is almost always, on weekends, operating, you know, at a level of service F.
Right. And, but, so the, the thing of it is, is that we're, we're adding, you know, a total of like seven to eight trips during that peak hour. So from a percentage perspective of that, that intersection, it, it's really not going to impact that, that poor level of service, you know, appreciably.
Well, I mean, I guess, I guess when you're at an F, you know, where do you go? But I frankly, as much as I, I think these standards are, are respected, because, because of the observations that everybody's made in this area, I think I would feel more comfortable if, with some counts that were made at the site during the peak hour. We're, we're in the season where you're going to get maximum utilization of these facilities, so it wouldn't be difficult to get the information. So you have to come back anyway. I frankly, for one, and I don't know how the rest of the commission feels, but I frankly would like to see some actual counts to back up the shared parking lot.
And I, I agree with that, and I'd also say, I think you need to take into account not just your changes, but also you have the, the Arnold Restaurant on the other side, and you have this other hotel, the diner, and you're, I mean, it's got four things all going into that one, and, and that's increasing. You know, you're, you're increasing rooms there, number of parking spaces, or the usage. I just think that it would be a good idea to have that, especially in real time.
In peak season, that exit backs up onto ninety-five. I mean, you're waiting on ninety-five, and you're right there. So whether you can affect that or not, I don't know, but it is a limitation of the site. And that's what we're trying to express to you.
Yeah, the queuing, the queuing on this is, is frequently backed up. I've never seen it onto ninety-five. I have seen it encroach on, on the turning, turning lane on ninety-five. And, and as Lynn said, there's several intersections north of here that are routinely backed up as well. So it's, it is gridlocked at, at this location from the overpass on twenty-seven, south to when you could buy Dunkin' Donuts, you know, then it, it frees up. Not for a great amount of time before it starts to back up from all the attractions that are located on the river. So, you know, any incremental increase in traffic here is, is critical.
I, I think of this similar to the Mystic Seaport project. I mean, and there was a full traffic study there, and I can't quote it, chapter and verse, but I remember the outcome was, it's such a busy road that even, like, building the entirely new hotel at the Seaport isn't going to make a difference to Route twenty-seven. I, you know, I live in town as well. I, I'm very familiar with it. So, I mean, we're, we're asking for a waiver of the traffic study. If you, if we don't get a waiver, obviously, we have to do a traffic study. But I would just ask, you know, to consider, it's a lot of work. And again, as I started off by saying, we're, we're adding seventeen hotel rooms, as Pete said, to an already signalized intersection that we know has bad service. But I don't know that the eight additional trips, and that's what's in the report, at peak, at the peak hour, is going to have a significant impact on traffic. And so just to go through that exercise, to say, eight more trips, you know, opening, you know, the new Pearl Restaurant downtown could have a bigger impact on it, traffic coming off the highway than our client's hotel. You just, I just don't think you know, it's, it's a busy place. I don't know, when we're talking about traffic generation, that adding seventeen hotel rooms with, again, eight trips in the peak hour is really going to make a difference.
It's a cumulative effect here.
What we're talking about here is a safety-related item. And, and it's difficult when something is served so poorly now, to sit here and say, well, because it's so bad, we're going to waive the traffic study.
Yeah.
When we've required it all the way down the line. I, I think that what we've got to ensure is that, that, you know, to the maximum extent possible, we've looked at this carefully, and that it isn't going to be any worse as a result of this. And I, I, I hate to do this to anybody, and we grant waivers on a regular basis to, to cooperate where we can. But frankly, I'm uneasy in this case, because it is a matter of safety, public safety. And, uh.
All we can do is make our, our best argument for it.
Right. No, you're being honest, and I appreciate that.
And, and, and we are, you know, if, if.
I frankly.
If we are adding a water park, I would understand.
I frankly have a hard time granting a waiver when it, it deals with the matter of public safety. And this is, this is a situation which is unsafe now, and I just want to make sure that we've looked at it and we're not making it critically worse, so.
Understood.
Ben, do you have?
Yeah, I don't.
Sorry, Mary Ellen?
I think of what my, my biggest concern is, it's not just the eight additional cars, but it's also removing the turn that's currently not at a single, signals. So I'd be curious to see how many people just do that cutoff right on in there, that now have to wait in line potentially at a stop sign. That could then push it back.
That's a very good point, and a reason why you would want to look at it. It makes a lot of sense. So I, I'm sorry, but I, I.
No, it's, it's good to know. So actually, I don't know, and maybe Clifton can help us. We do have waiver requests, and we are asking to continue this. But I don't know if you can vote on the waiver request tonight? No? They have to be part of at the end?
You can retract your waiver request.
Would there be any, well, can you do your own traffic study on your own and bring it in later and present it as new information?
During the open public hearing.
Yeah.
Or it could be stipulated as, you know, condition of approval after the public hearing.
Even if it's been submitted?
Yep.
I mean, we'll obviously go back and look and discuss what we can do, what information is out there, we can build upon. Because like I said, I know there was a traffic study up there for Mystic Seaport. I know it's a few years old now. That was COVID time when we did that. So it's got to be five years old now, but.
I don't think that's relevant. I mean, it's post-COVID. It's.
Yeah, that's exactly. Well, I'm just saying, like, I don't know how traffic engineers do it, if they look at, if they totally need new counts to, to do the work, or if they can rely on some old counts. I just don't know.
And, and if they're identical to your analytical study, then, okay.
Yeah.
If there are more, then let's talk about it.
Yeah.
Also, I have a question. Is this a chain hotel?
Yes.
So has the design of the building, that's your chain design?
So the, the design of the building is prepared by an architect that is under, you know, they're approved by the, the brand. And the brand provides them with a model that they have to conform to, but they are allowed to make changes to conform to site differences. Obviously, you know, this, this hotel has a bend in it. The brand standard doesn't generally have a bend in it, that sort of thing.
And this has not gone through the Architectural Review Board? It has?
No, it hasn't.
It is going to.
It will.
Which is, again, one of, I think, one of the reasons for continuance, because given its location, its prominent location coming into town, I have a feeling Architectural Design Review Board is going to have some comments. And, you know, if, if we were one hundred percent locked in with this commission, I would almost hate to be at the whim of a condition like we have to do whatever ADRB says, you know, after an approval here. I'd like to hear from them, and have you have the ability to hear from them, and if there's anything we need to change, we can do it so that it's in the final plan that we present to you.
Yeah, you know, I mean, this is kind of the gateway into Mystic in our area, and the building certainly doesn't reflect anything that I would consider mystic-esque.
Yeah, it's of its time. It was a, a traditional Howard Johnson's at the time, and.
The new building doesn't. So.
So is it the commission's feeling that, that the traffic study and physical counts of, of actual parking utilization are something we'd like to see before we vote on this?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, and, and we're not voting on this this evening until we get input from all the other commissions. That's the recommendation in our package. Does everybody concur with that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So you do, you do have some time. I've seen loop detectors on twenty-seven on, and on, on the Boulevard. I would have to think that DOT has numbers at this intersection.
Yeah, there's certainly numbers available on twenty-seven, for sure.
Chuck, I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Are you still on the Water Pollution Control Authority?
No, sir.
Oh. What is your knowledge of the moratorium being lifted? If you can, is it two minutes away or ten minutes away, or do we all not know?
You know, I, I honestly don't have an opinion on that. It's a scientific thing. I, I hate to guess.
Okay. Because is it more, excuse, my understanding was it was that interchanger at that location is the issue? Because I thought the moratorium had been lifted for other parts of town.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Is that my understanding?
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct. I think, I think you are right on that.
So it's that whole twenty-seven Coogan Boulevard?
And I know they just resealed all the pipes recently, just re-lined them, because that was where they were getting a lot of leakage and, or stormwater in and things.
Right.
What, last, last summer?
Right.
I would actually welcome a review of, of that fully actuated, integrated signal at, at that location. There, there may be a way, there may be a way, and it may be disclosed in this study, where the level of service can be improved just by rephasing. And I don't, I don't want to rely on you to make an improvement for DOT, but, you know, it wouldn't be the first time that we looked at something and we were able to make a tremendous improvement just with rephasing. No radius improvements, no turning lane improvements, no, no physical changes in the geometry, just merely reallocation of green time to the various legs of the intersection, and, and, you know, changing the, the interaction of all the signals to get the time-space right on Route twenty-seven.
My understanding was the Seaport did work with DOT to do some rephasing in the past year or so.
And it works better.
Yeah.
It worked. That's why I say it wouldn't be the first time. So, again, I think this is something that can come out of your study, and it would be a good thing for everybody adjacent to the intersection, in addition to yourselves. And, and we do defer to the Architectural Design Review Board. None of us are architects, but we do have a sensitivity for what's presented to us. And so we welcome their feedback on this design. Anyone else have any questions? I'm sorry, Clifton.
I wanted to interject on the phasing for the signalized intersection. That, that comments come up a couple of times between the police chief, as well as the Department of Public Works, as DOT is looking to replace the mast arms for the lights. Fortunately, and according to DOT, is all of that money comes from separate pots. So the replacement of the mast arms doesn't mean they're going to look at the full intersection. So you have to get money from somebody else in DOT to do that. So it has been asked both by the police chief, as well as the Public Works Department. I think DOT is well aware of that intersection and both the highway being a large problem. That honestly has to be done on their own terms at their own time, unfortunately. But I did want to answer that. It has been asked before.
And I think that DOT is actually looking into that intersection. It's a several-year kind of thing, but they are aware of it and they've been contacted.
Whatever OSTA's involved, it's a several-year thing.
The whole exit ninety area is a big concern to DOT. And then, as you've seen with recent crashes along I-95, everywhere from exit eighty-nine to the Rhode Island border is a problem point for them. So unrelated to this project, but just anecdotally.
I do think as part of the traffic study, that, that area, that whole intersection, there are pedestrians that go both ways, and I think it's very important to include that, as well as any accidents that have happened right there. Because the pedestrians go, you know, across, as if they're going to Mystic Village, or McDonald's, or whatever, as well as across down to Seaport.
It's actually the allocation of time to a pedestrian signal that makes those intersections perform so poorly.
Mm-hmm.
And all that has to be taken into consideration. Obviously, pedestrian safety is, is first and foremost above vehicular safety. But it's, in almost any busy intersection, when you include a pedestrian phase, you are optimistic that you can get to level of service C, never mind anything beyond level of service C. And when there are long crossing paths like that, you know, multiple lanes and multiple crossing paths, it becomes even, even more difficult to make an intersection work.
I just want to point of information that our, ask for clarification, that the commission is not asking the applicant to solve DOT's problem for that intersection.
No.
So I think the clarity of what they need to provide in terms of the traffic study is solely related to the generation of what's happening on the site, not largely everything else that goes on.
That's, that's exactly what we're looking for. In addition to validating the eighty-fifth percentile number with some actual counts of parking utilization. That'll help you get a better idea whether the valet parking is going to be tripped or not, and to what extent.
Mr. Chair, I would love to emphasize Mary Ellen's point of that other turnoff is being eliminated, which is going to funnel more into that.
Right.
Yeah.
Anyone else have any questions to the applicant? Are you concluded with your presentation, Alton?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. With the understa, I assume you're going to continue this. The only other thing I'd just point out is in term of, that this is also coastal area management. management, coastal site plan review matter, because it's within 1,000 feet, but really there's no coastal resources on site. The only issue was water quality impacts, and you have a memo from DEP saying that the stormwater management improvements, the improvements to the system will make it better on the environment than it currently is, and they found that it was consistent with all applicable coastal policies. So, I just, I assume you saw that in your packet, but I just wanted to highlight that as well. Sometimes, you know, we forget about the, the coastal site plan side of things, but it also is required here. So, with that, yeah, we will conclude, we will come back, in addition to, I guess, in, in addition to everything else with the parking and everything, part of the, the issue that Clifton raised was there's outdoor seating at the diner, so we want to consider that in our analysis as well, we did not consider that initially, so we want to consider that as well, and get the whole site sort of buttoned up and approved, hopefully, with additional information. And that will include signs, they do have a sign package, we hadn't really pushed for that, we'll figure out if they need them lit or not lit, we'll look at the, the wall sign analysis, how, how much square footage we get under your regulations. But the intention is to keep the monument sign, there's one when you're on the highway that you can see, and there's one at the intersection, and the intention is to keep those monument signs as pre-existing non-conformities.
Excuse me, could that signage, could you do a night view of the signage?
We'll, we'll check, yeah, like, we'll check, yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm not sure if it's lit, if it's not lit, hopefully, you know, that, that makes it much easier.
Anyone on the commission have any questions of staff? Clifton, any additional input for us this evening?
None at this time, I mean, it's, my comments have largely been mentioned already. The outdoor seating is a big component that I believe was missed, and just for the benefit of the, the diner and their business model, including that in this application is well-advised. This will be before the ADRB next week on June 10th, and then, as well as in front of the Police Commission as well. I think some of the concerns that have been raised tonight are gonna be re-raised from the Police Commission. I will report back particularly what they say, as Mary Ellen raised with the removal of the single curb cut, that's gonna be something that they're going to look at specifically. And then, any comments we receive from DOT will be shared. Town engineer hasn't commented yet, so once we receive those, those will be distributed as well. I think large.
Likewise, if you could share our concerns with the other boards as well.
Yep, will do.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll attend more meetings. Yeah, I believe, I believe that's it, the, yeah, that's it for me, sorry.
Thank you.
And just another question, what was the rationale between, behind eliminating the other curb cut? Is that to add parking?
No, so the, the rationale was that it would, you know, kind of prevent the errant person trying to take a left out of that, that slip ramp, and that, because it's a right turn in, and there's a dedicated lane, that having that slip ramp really wasn't adding anything to the, the function of the intersection, because you, people can still, you know, basically take a free right-hand turn at the intersection through the majority of the signal timings, right? There's not many signal times where you couldn't, so that was the, the idea behind.
Concludes for this evening?
That, that concludes, if you need, it sounds like we would be on the regular meeting in July at the earliest, so I can, which is beyond 35 days, so I can get Clifton a consent to an extension, I can write it out tonight if you want, but.
Does it fit into that schedule, Clifton?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you, Attorney Casey.
Okay.
Thank you both. Okay. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, first person on the signup list is John, John, I apologize, I can't read your last name, and I don't want to mispronounce it, at 253 Germenville Avenue, Greenmanville Avenue. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, my name is John Susuas, I'm the owner of the Mystic Diner. Thank you for listening. We're in support of the, of the application, basically to beautify the area, and our concerns have been raised tonight by the commission, you know, parking, the outdoor seating, so I really don't have anything further to say. I hope that when, you know, when the applicant comes back and all their questions are answered, we can proceed. I mean, it, like you mentioned, the hotel is in dire need of some beautification, but, you know, we do not want to disrupt the existing business at the diner, like you said, we're very busy, and, you know, we'd like to keep it that way, but thank you for listening.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And Attorney Jim Longland, Loughlin, for Old Mystic Village. Evening, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm Jim.
I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name.
That's okay, it's Loughlin, L-O-U-G-H-L-I-N. Thanks for what you do, very thorough review, and thanks to your staff, too, I've interacted with Ashley and Clifton, and they're, they're very responsive and very user-friendly. We endorse the application, Howard, Howard Johnson's was an exciting place when we were growing up, to see it improved, state-of-the-art, of course, who wouldn't want that? But at the same time, we've asked for more time so that we can take that parking study and present it to our own experts, our own professionals, and work with Attorney Casey, he's very responsive, he actually called me back twice, who, an attorney doing that. And so, we trust that the back and forth between my office and his and, and our experts, hopefully, we come back to you with a resolution if there are any issues with the parking study, but we intend to work with them so we can come back with something that's good for the, for the greater good. But, so, I'll see you next time, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Attorney Casey, do you wish any rebuttal time for either of those comments?
No, we, we're thankful for the support of, of John and the diner and Old Mystic Village, and we do think it's a great project for, for that corner of town, and will help beautify it and sort of transform it, so. No comments, we, and we hope the updated traffic study and parking study we do will satisfy our supporters as well, and, and the commission.
We appreciate you working, we appreciate you working with the butters like this.
Yeah.
That makes it easier on everybody. Thank you.
Yep.
Unless the commission has any other questions, make a motion to continue the public hearing.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to continue the public hearing for PZ 2411, SUP and CAMJ and H Mystic Hospitality into the next regularly scheduled P&amp;Z meeting in July.
Motion made to continue the public hearing, thank you, Ryan, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lynn, thank you, Lynn. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Chair will tie, anyone oppose? Any abstentions? Motion passes. I think that brings us to future public hearings, item nine, traditionally we review these. If there are any questions on whether any of the items scheduled should be public hearings, they all are.
We saw these last time.
Yeah, last time, yeah.
I'm sorry.
Two weeks ago, we, we reviewed, went through them all. And actually, we requested a public hearing of the last item D, that was going to be administrative business.
Okay, if there are no other comments, I think the appropriate motion is in order.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adjourn the, the P&amp;Z meeting this evening.
Motion to adjourn has been made, no second is required, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you all.